Welcome to the board supervised meeting for Thursday, May 2nd. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is the meeting being recorded for rebroadcasting purposes? There's no exact exception until... Please stand for a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that are gathered here. We thank you for our community, our neighbors, our families. Give us the strength to shine bright in this ever-darkening world. Let us, in our community, stand tall and proud and shine bright as the shining light on the hill, as a community that we are. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I was anxious to get started, sorry about that. All right. Under announcements, I wanted to announce, it doesn't happen often, and I know Troy doesn't like being recognized, I'd like to publicly thank Troy Texture for helping IC on the roof for flowers outside. Our building looks so nice, volunteers his time, his money, comes out here on hot ninety-degree days, plants colorful flowers, brings his own water, and jugs and waters on, and keeps them all tip-top shape. So, I wanted to thank Troy, we saw him here the other day.
And he normally doesn't seek reimbursement, so he does that out of his own pocket.
The plant is beautiful.
Yeah.
They look beautiful.
They smell good, too.
They smell really good.
Yeah.
You tried to reimburse them all, what time did you say today?
All right, another announcement, I don't know if anyone follows East Calico Township on Facebook, the manager and assistant manager, they just released the other day, a new monthly update. We constantly post peak of the weeks every Friday, it tells you what's kind of happening next week. A lot of times, they're putting on, like, Co-Calico Soccer has tryouts, the fire companies have chicken barbecues, or the Adamstown Library is holding an event, so it's an easy way to navigate and tell you what's going on in the community. So, kudos to them for doing that. And again, there's gonna be a new monthly update now posted, it's gonna be just an easy, easy one-page document telling you, like, all the top things happening in the community, so if you don't come to meetings and whatnot, it's quickly, you can kind of get caught up to speed with that.
Question?
Can you please come forward and state your name?
Yes, Nelson Milton. From Holland, just out of curiosity, would that be something when we sponsor a food truck in our development to let them know? Because it's not private, it's for anybody that wants to show up.
So I assume if you reach out to township manager or assistant township manager, manager@ect.town or atm@ect.town, they gladly upload that for you.
Okay.
And it'll be added to the peak of the week.
Cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, two more quick updates, instead of bringing it up at the end of the meeting, I'll bring it up now. The township manager and assistant manager are applying for two grants for the township. One of them is through the Lancaster County Community Development Block Grant Program, that's for, we're seeking $65,000 out of grant, which is 50% of the total cost. It's going to be, if you're familiar with the skate park, the New Reims Town Skate Park that we have there, that parking lot's rough, I mean, very rough, so it's to redo that whole entire parking lot, add ADA parking, and do the whole walking trail around that. So that way, it'll be a lot nicer if you walk, you don't have to twist your ankle, and you'll have a flat surface to do. And, we are also applying for a DEP, the 902 grant, and that's to replace our, over two-decade, I think it was time, twenty-four years old as of April, so April of 2020 is when we got our front-end loader?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, two thousand, sorry. April 2000 is when we got our front-end loader, so that's twenty-four years old, and the community, the 902 grant, we will be seeking $251,000 grant, and that's 90% of the total cost. So it will be costing us 10%, and then we also get to sell our old piece of equipment. So, it's a great way to make those funds, get those funds and make them useful. All right. Do you guys have anything? Well, just at the top there?
Yeah, our last meeting, right after Stoll was here, and there was a lot of comments from their engineer, Bill Rountree, and he said they were gonna meet with staff here in the coming weeks. Matt Cream, were you able to meet with them?
I was.
Is there anything, any conclusions were drawn, or?
So, before the meeting, they did respond to our request for a timeline, remaining work to be completed on the site. They provided it before the meeting, we discussed it at the meeting, we suggested to them that in aid of keeping in touch, an update from them every Friday morning, bulleted points of things that have happened or are intended to happen in the near future, any update to the timeline that would correspond to those bulleted items, and receiving it Friday morning would permit Tommy then to include relevant information to his Friday afternoon memos to the board of highlights of the week. We discussed the process of what we're calling Phase Two of the roadway project, Phase One being the construction of the entrance to the property at Redding Road, and which will be the first phase of the relocated Hill Road. We reviewed plans with them, John Chick was here, and Mike Briner was here. The plans that we reviewed were principally the layout plans, which of course are important, but aren't everything to the design of the road. But everybody was in agreement that the layout, as shown on that plan, was agreeable. And, within the next week or so, they should be submitting the full plans for Phase Two of the Hill Road relocation, which will be in the nature of a revised land development plan. So, the land development plan that the board approved, under which they are constructing the warehouse property and the Phase One entrance, will be revised, essentially to include, not change anything that is already approved, but revised to include the remainder of the relocation of Hill Road. We also discussed the timetable with Pendott, and everybody was agreed that moving Pendott off of their process was not likely, and the principal consequence of that is, they don't consider reviewing, they, being Pendott, won't consider reviewing the Phase Two HOP application until they have finally approved the Phase One HOP. They did point out that there are actually two HOPs on each phase. One HOP being the Hill Road portion, and the other HOP of Phase One being the Colonel Howard Boulevard Intersection Improvement, and the other HOP of Phase Two is closing the old intersection of Hill Road. So we're expecting to see that submission of the revised plan, which would then be the basis of the Phase Two HOP application. We're expecting to see that in the next week or so. We also discussed, once that plan was in and reviewed, that there is a lot of construction connected with the Phase Two of the Hill Road relocation, that's completely under the jurisdiction of the township, which includes the construction of the new roadway, its intersection with the old roadway, work to limit and/or close portions of the old roadway up to the limit of the connection to the state highway. So, most of the construction work could be completed, except for that connector, and they are going to propose a schedule by which that can get started late summer or early fall this year. And that was, you know, pretty much the highlights of moving things along. The whole tone of the meeting was emphasizing the need for us to stay in touch, and that we've had one, tomorrow's the second Friday, the Friday updates are in the, all that.
Okay. Progress. Thank you. Anything else? No presentations. Public comments, five minutes per person limit, or comment on agenda items, please come forward and state your name for the meeting minutes.
Just to be on the safe side, Anthony Schimmacken, here on behalf of item number seven on your agenda, even though it's old business, I prefer, prefer, at that point, that's a big word.
We can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll continue. April 18th meeting minutes for approval. You guys got any changes?
No, I haven't. I do not.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 18th meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution 2024-11, illegal immigration law enforcement. Guys want to talk about it? Tommy, can you please?
I think we've talked about it.
Or it's attached in the packet. Everyone has their own packet.
You all have it in your packet, you can grab it in the hallway, but all read it out loud. Township East Calico Lancaster County Pennsylvania Resolution 2024-11, resolution to declare local law enforcement will fully cooperate with any necessary law enforcement agency when encountering undocumented individuals, whereas illegal immigration is a significant issue in the United States, and whereas a political subdivision that declares itself to be a sanctuary city, quote-unquote, for undocumented individuals experiences a great financial strain on social services and on other public resources, and whereas sanctuary cities have experienced an increase in crime, and whereas Lancaster City enacted ordinance 01-2024 codifying policy adopted in 2019 that prohibits city officials from inquiring about an individual's immigration status, and prohibits city officials from sharing information regarding said status with federal immigration authorities, and whereas the federal government possesses both the authority and the duty to enforce the immigration laws of our nation, now therefore being resolved, the Board of Supervisors does hereby declare local law enforcement will fully cooperate and coordinate with all necessary law enforcement agencies when encountering undocumented individuals. Resolve this second day of May 2024.
I did. I only messed up a little bit.
All right. Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-11, declaring local law enforcement will fully cooperate with any necessary law enforcement agency when encountering undocumented individuals. Second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the tredders report.
Tredders report. We have a general fund bank account listed bills in the amount of $116,445.40 for the week of April 18th of 2024, and $130,589.24 for the week of April 25th of 2024. Any questions on any of those bills? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Next. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a high-truth fund bank account listed bills in the amount of $16,515 for the week of April 18th of 2024. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a capital reserve fund listed bills in the amount of $153,400 for the week of April 18th of 2024, and $3,186.86 for the week of April 25th of 2024. Is there any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have an ARPA fund listed bills in the amount of $234 for the week of April 15th of 2024. Any questions there? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have an electronic payment list of bills for payroll in the amount of $99,170.93 for the pay period from April 7th of 2024 to April 20th of 2024. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I'll just make one other comment here, when the list of bills are being printed up, I want to say thank you to our financial minister, Ed Fury. The details are just, become more endless in what we see these days, just details there. Doesn't surprise me, there's no questions because it's all right there, or written text, so, thank you to that secretary.
I totally agree with that. Very detailed. All right, moving on, new business. Gentlemen, anything for new business? Anything for you?
No.
All right, old business, rezoning and planning project. Want to talk about it again?
Certainly. Through my, through my limited experience here, I'm trying to look at different things, to talk to different people, we haven't really revisited a, any kind of major zoning changes within our township in the last 24 years, so trying to figure out ways that we could do that. I brought that up when we were over at Stevens, and then it was, you know, we talked about how much the expense would be for something like that, so then I said I'd talk to different people, because I'm hearing from different, you know, residents, you know, about fears of more warehouses and everything else, so as I just looked at it generally myself, I just threw some stuff out on the table with regard to, you know, spot zoning and looking at saving some agriculture land within our township. So, as we heard in the last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, we heard testimony on certain tracts of land within our township that is the best agriculture lands in our township, and it's currently, some of it's currently zoned as light industrial and residential, and as I look at all these different places within our township, a few different places, we have certainly some work to do to make sure that we're keeping agriculture just as much as we're keeping business and commercial and such. So, so in my opinion, we could all sit here and look at our township, so, and say, we need to maintain our ag, we need to maintain our commercial, we need to maintain those things, and, you know, we have the responsibility to make sure that we're balancing that out as a township. And that's what I'm hearing from residents as well. So, you know, I hear both sides of that, from all residents, so that's about all I have to say.
Yeah, I've already commented on this in several different meetings. You know, I recently had a chance to talk to our manager, Tommy. We looked at the township zoning map as a whole, township, there's a copy of that on the front table here. Looking at that as such, we talked about the amount of housing units, whether it's apartments or houses, that are in the works of being a project initiated, or well down the road getting close to implementation. I think, Tommy, that number, we were somewhere between seven and eight hundred units, currently being talked about, initiated, or close to fruition. When you examine the zoning map and look at the different, three different classes of residential zoning in the township, you will see hundreds and hundreds and more hundreds of acres that nobody's talking about. There's no talk about any kind of building projects, nobody's... And so, as time goes by, and we go down the road further, and some of that starts to get in the mix, we could easily have that many seven or eight hundred more housing units in the township. You know, my concern is, in some ways similar to Dan, is that what the community wants to see? Are we growing that all of these get built out in higher densities, like, you know, the county's Plan 2040 suggests? Or would some of that be better used and kept in agriculture or conservation needs? I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that I have all the answers to that. It might be you ask a hundred people that question, you get a hundred different answers, I don't know. But, you know, the facts remain that it's been over 20 years that I'm aware of, that the zoning in the whole township has been looked at from one end to the other. And, you know, there's been major tracts of land that have a history back to 1980, when significant changes from agriculture to residential zoning changed. So, you know, with all that time that's gone by, I'm not sure where the community stands as a whole, if we're looking at the community's vision of the future with this many more housing units in the township, the congestion that comes with it, all of that. So, you know, I wonder, and I was looking for feedback from the board and residents, you know, if it would behoove us to, to look at the zoning in the township from one end to the other, to see what the tech residents are looking for. You know, as far as changing zoning, one of the things I learned before I was ever in office, you have to deal with some of the things that previous boards put in place. You might have to, you might agree with it, you might disagree with it, but, you know, it's been put in place and you have to deal with it. You know, I've said it before, I'm a property rights advocate, and, you know, property owners should have the ability to step up and, you know, have a major say where the property goes, as long as there's, it fits within the guidelines, what the community's looking for. So, I've said a lot there, but, you know, that's kind of where my thoughts are going on this, and I'm looking for feedback from a lot of different directions.
So, I too am a property rights advocate. I think you should be able to do what you want with your own property within the means, and quite frankly, government is the antithesis of property rights. And so I find myself up here, and I want everybody to be able to do with their own property what they want, and it's a very tough, it's a hard thing, when you talk about store order management, you talk about permitting, you talk about everything. It's a very hard thing for a conservative person like myself to look at that and try to figure out what to do. I represent 11,000 people, and I try to look at everyone's property rights, and, you know, when I brought up, I think I can't recall which meeting it was, over over Stevens Fire Company, I brought up looking at our entire, our entire township with regard to looking at the zoning and everything, I kind of got poo-pooed upon with expense and such, and it's been 20 years, so I'm trying to figure out the least expensive ways to do that, as a responsible, you know, fiduciary, you know, person. And so sometimes, if you can't do a blanket because that's costly, then you can look at it, and you can get the feedback from the residents and see what they want. And I can tell you, you know, specifically, this one has been a topic of debate for years, and has nothing specifically against that specific property owner, but nobody, the folks that I represent, 10,996 of them don't want a million square foot warehouse. And, you know, so I try to weigh those things out, I try to balance out our entire township, I look at where we're at from an agriculture standpoint, I look for, I look for where we're at from residential, if we add 800 more units, that's gonna be a significant burden upon our school district. What does that cost? A new school needs to be built. You know, all of these things are weighing upon my mind, right? You know, we haven't looked at it in 20 years, so through this conversation, I was gonna, you know, talk about the plan commission, maybe we can kind of put it in their, in their chair for a little bit to do an overlay, maybe my, my vocabulary's wrong with that, but an overlay of our entire township, and look at it and see what makes sense. Yeah, I threw a couple things out at your last meeting, and again, I'm a property rights person, too, but I'm trying to look at all of the people that I represent, I don't think that's the best place infrastructurally for those kinds of things, and, you know, from that standpoint, I really, you know, that was kind of an easy one to look at, if we're gonna try to save money from a blanket over, like, change of our zoning in the township. But, there's a whole lot of butts in that. I don't want to sit up here and tell somebody that can and can't do something with the property. That's how I start this conversation. But I have, I have responsibility to our township to make sure that 20 years from now, we are sustainable, agriculturally, residentially, commercially, light industrially, whatever... now, we are sustainable agriculturally, residentially, commercially, light industrially, whatever it does, and I just want to be smart in that. Because I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be here in twenty years and maybe I won't be on the board anymore, right? And so, you know, but, you know, I guess that's what I wanted to say.
You'd still be in the lower half of tenure and supervisory in the rest of the town.
So, at the end of the day, I look at all this, I look at the eight hundred units we're talking about, I'm concerned with the burden on our schools because that's just, that's a taxpayer nightmare as well. And I point to one of our school board members in the back. Maintaining a balance across our entire township, realizing the infrastructure that, you know, different things in different parts of our township would significantly be a burden. The tax revenues that we see as a township for some of these big buildings is negligible compared to what the county and our school board, our school district gets, which is good for our school district, but, you know, as, as we hear in previous, you know, the tax dollars and revenues from our, from our warehouse projects within the township itself is negligible. And we're still responsible for all the roads and everything else. So again, we're burdening our taxpayers locally with that stuff. So, it's a tough balance, and I hear exactly what you're saying, Jeff, and I just want to make sure that I wasn't necessarily prepared the first time I talked.
So, I think so. We'll give you a couple more minutes.
I'll give you sixty more seconds, that'll do it.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So by looking at the zoning map, I drove a couple of roads nearby here as well, you know, talking about infrastructure in some property zone, residential, not too far from here. There is no infrastructure where some of the farms currently zoned residential nearby here are zoned. So, in my opinion, if we are thinking about doing something like this, we should be focusing in those areas versus where there's infrastructure kind of already in place. There's a couple farms right on the other side of Hill Road here, there's no infrastructure, there's no water, there's no sewer there, currently zoned residential. We've been hearing from the water authority, you know, pushing to try to stay away from wells, right? Private wells. And it's a great farm land too. But obviously, it's zoned residential, but I'm not going to go tell them, hey, you're, we're going to do, switch to agriculture, we want to preserve the farm. It's got to be, they got to, the landowner needs to be willing. Obviously, it was, I don't know if twenty or twenty-four years ago, whenever they did it, that's when they did the blanket overlay, that was, that was put residential. But again, I get, I get what you're saying, we haven't looked at it in a while, and to go spend a hundred thousand dollars to have a consultant come in here and tell you, my recommendation is, A B C is light industrial, D E F is residential, the rest of the alphabet's commercial. We're still going to be making the ultimate decision, but we just blew fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars of our taxpayer money. So, my thought of all this, I mean, let's see where the discussion goes, let's, let's see what comes to fruit of any of it, but when you guys put in place FS4 program, we advertise it in the, in the mailer, we...
There's a letter sent out to every property with an agriculture zone.
So, you know, we could, we could do that, a way of reaching these landowners and saying, the board is seeking X Y Z. If you have any interest, please reach out, and we can give you more information. But, or as of now, there is no more information. We have to come up with what we want to do. And I feel like that, you know, costly, cost-wise, I think we'll be saving a ton of money. I don't want to go blow taxpayer money on, on, on someone to come in and just tell us, oh, this is my fault. Because at the end of the day, I mean, if that person has an agenda, he knows somebody and he has his own, or she has their own agenda, they're not going to come tell us. Follow me? And I don't have an agenda, I definitely don't have an agenda. I just want to do what's right for the community, like you said. But, that, I mean, that, that's my two cents. I'm not going to come to you and tell you, you got to do this on your property, or else. That's, that's not me.
It's one of the challenges we face, but, you know, I wonder if it would make sense for, we're speculating what it would cost to go down the expert route. Maybe Tommy could actually gather some information for us, what it would cost to do that.
I'm not a big fan of the Lancaster County, let me rephrase, Places 2040, you know, that puts a twinge between my shoulder blades. But they've already done all the work, they've done a lot of work, a lot of it's, you know, high density, that's what they're leaning towards, they're leaning towards, whether they believe it or not, they're leaning towards a fifteen-minute city, nobody needs to drive, everybody can take their bikes to here and there and everywhere, that's Places 2040. So, you know, they've done a lot of that stuff. I don't know if we need to spend a ton of money on a consultant. Again, I've talked about this, like with the fire departments, we have a planning commission that's pretty good at their job and responsible, why don't we take the overlay of 2040? Why don't we take our current map? Why don't we give it to the hands of the planning commission, not to throw anything undone, but, Steve, sorry, and, you know, and have them take a look at the whole thing? We save a hundred grand, we don't need a consultant, but at least we can have the conversation. That's what I was kind of getting at at Stevens when we had that conversation, but, you know, again, learning as I go here.
So, is that a possibility to throw the zoning map in our planning commission's hands and say, what are your guys' recommendation on, on our zoning map as a whole? Can you guys give us a recommendation just to see where they come at, where they come in at? I mean, that might be a start. They might say it looks the way it is. Or they might say what I just said, or they might say what he just said, or, I don't know. It's a start, and it's, it's a cheap start, you know, they get paid to be here, a million dollars a meeting, right? But, it's just a conversation, you know, it's, we have a great planning commission, there are a lot of good people there.
Exactly. The planning commission lives here, they know the residents, they know the community, they know what we want, they know what the goals of our community are. We just haven't done anything with it in the last twenty, with the zoning, twenty-some years. That's, that's ultimately what my attempt is, maintain our farmland, we have a duty to make sure that we maintain our farmland, maintain our, you know, our tax base, make sure we're not overburdening our school with residences, and our planning commission's on that same page. That's what I think, I think we should really kind of put it in there and make it before we make any more calls.
The one thing I'd like to note about it, I feel with, with all the people between the planning commission and board supervisors or consultants and managers, communication, communication's key. I think there's a high level of communication and respect there, and I feel like we can get an hon, some honest feedback with no agendas from anybody, and to do what's right for, for the community. So, I'd have no, I'd have no reservation on taking that step, because I trust every single person on this board, that board, and beyond, so. I think we could get some honest, good feedback, and at a, at a much reduced cost.
And I was always accused of being the cheap one.
This guy uses pennies to make dimes.
But, actually, next, please, five. I believe I'm representing the party that Mr. Burton was referring to earlier, it's the Grayville tract, most of it's in the tract, it's about a hundred and twenty acres. It's currently used for agricultural purposes, but it's been residential, it's zoned for a number of years. Took four years, went through a planning commission process, supported supervisors, different board supervisors, although Mr. Mitchell was in the tail end of that in twenty twenty, but two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, there was a rezoning of light industrial, so I believe this is the property, or properties of Mr. Burton's property site. As long as there's no rush of judgment, everything's fine, but I don't think it's appropriate to single out one property owner in the situation of this one, talking about potentially a comprehensive overhaul of the zoning. So, be that as it may, the Grayvilles have been in this, in the, at least they count the township for five generations, they are well-respecting the community, and they're not going to do anything that's going to harm the community, they have the township's best interests at heart. So, as long as there's no immediacy to this, from my perspective, and through Mr. Google and Mr. Zimmer and the others, it's possible to agree, as long as it's going to happen imminently, a big, so I appreciate you taking this time to the service of the scene. And also, Mr. Ryan, I want to thank him personally, this was under agenda for the last month, I couldn't make it, I had another commitment, so I appreciate the board as well as Mr. Ryan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
For the record, it was Mr. Schimmanek.
Anthony Schimmanek, Morgan Hall, Ben Crosswell, can't have anyone call him, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, if I can make one suggestion, or tell me some comment, there is no immediacy in anything that you described, and perhaps we can, instead of talking about the zoning map, we can talk about the Future Land Use Map, which is a portion of the comprehensive planage. And it's the planning tool that identifies where the infrastructure is, where the path of growth is, and forecasts where it's appropriate for the future land uses to be located. It's a step from there to amend the zoning map. The Future Land Uses Map is a, is a planning tool, the zoning map is law. So, I would suggest that when we communicate to the planning commission, we're asking them to focus on the future land uses. And one of the things that has happened at Lancaster County Planning is a pivot from the adoption of 2040 to shift some staff and add some staff on the analytical side. So, the data that was developed for Places 2040, they're continuing to update to help municipalities such as us as a resource. Because when I first started with the township as the solicitor for the Traffic Impact Feed Committee, we were just coming out of the Great Recession, and I was surprised to learn that the school district census was declining in two thousand nine, ten, eleven, and in a direct relation to cost of housing closer to Philadelphia. As the recession depressed the housing market, people were living closer to Philadelphia. The trend has reversed. So, knowing when and how things are trending, LCPC is providing free to municipalities, if you like that word, free, Joe, all of those outlets.
Okay. Stevens?
Yes, sir. Steve Grayville, Ben, the Frey family, and the room in the family. I just wanted to just go over a couple of things and let you know how we got through this process. The land was in high density, half the ground on our farm, and half on lower density residential. And Economic Development Corporation came to us, it said there's a shingle plant out of Texas looking for ground. We met at the property, the Senator Almond's office, and a bunch of officials from the township, E B C, and I understand the planning commission, discussed the project. We were asked if we would reconsider, or if we would consider having our land rezoned, and the process began in two thousand seventeen. So that brings us to where we are tonight. The thing that I wanted to discuss, also, prior to that, I went around and met the fellow residents, letting them know that the township asked us if the owners knew our land, and met the fellow residents and left them know that we, you know, we could have had high-density housing or a potentially one neighbor based upon if we go to light industrial. So I met the fellow residents, went back to the township, the planning commission, like the county planning commission, and the land was ultimately rezoned. I guess the frustration I have, and we have as a landowner, in our land being discussed at a public meeting and us not being aware of it until we're notified after that it's coming up on the agenda at the third meeting after it's been already discussed twice, I would just say, put yourself in the landowner's shoes, if, if you're discussing property, wouldn't you want to be notified if your property is going to be discussed as well? And so maybe going forward in the future, just let the property owner know that, you know, talk to them, perhaps, before you bring it up at public meetings, it just as a resident and a landowner, it was just some frustration that we're being talked about and didn't know it, and we wouldn't have been called. Notify us that we're going to be on the agenda, we wouldn't have known. So that's all we're asking, it's just that common courtesy, so. Any questions?
First, you. I'll answer to that. We, we spoke, I'm not going to hide, we spoke on the phone after, after this, you were saying, you were frustrated, and, and I told you, I said, it was brought up at the meeting, but there was no, no address or no name given, and that Friday morning, our, our manager, Friday afternoon, had reached out, and I told you, if he wasn't going to reach out, I would have reached out.
We appreciate that.
It's the right thing to do, and we would have not discussed this at a meeting without your counsel or you guys being present. In fact, as, you know, the last meeting was a perfect example, if we wanted to, we would have. We didn't, out of respect, we waited for this. It's the way to do it, it's the right way to do it and work together in a community. If you truly mean well, respect is mutual, not one way. So, you know, I, I apologize to you over the phone, I'll apologize to you in public, it's on YouTube, you can show the whole world, I know you're not that, but if you guys took offense to that, I apologize to the Grayville family for, for that. But, you know, moving forward, it's just open line of communication. But, please, like I told you on the phone, don't take it in a bad way, because Mr. Burton, when he brought it up, he did not mean it in a bad way at all. He was just opening up discussion, never mentioned a name, never mentioned where, or an address, it was just, it was just the talk. And here we are now finally talking in front of the public and you guys.
Sure.
And that's how it should be.
Yeah, you're right, and communication absolutely is a key, and that's something, so I appreciate that.
Maybe, and to add to it, we have, you know, you're part of the planning commission, we have great, we have great staff here at the township as well, starting from the manager, assistant manager, to our secretary. So, you know, anyone ever have any questions, please reach out, you know, it's, communication's going to get us to where we all want to be.
If I may.
Sure.
When I brought it up in the last meeting, I had talked about it at Stevens, not about your property, but specifically looking at our entire zoning map, and trying to figure out how we can balance out light industrial, ag, so on and so forth. Kept hearing rumors for the last, how many years, about a million square foot warehouse going out there. I'm looking at it, and I'm on the board, I keep thinking about how are we going to do this infrastructurally, is that really what anybody wants out there, those kinds of things? And so I tried to figure out a way that, you know, how do I handle this as a new supervisor? And I didn't say anything, and we, you know, I hinted in Stevens' thing, like, how do I do this, what's the process, the planning commission, it's the, you know, where are we at with this? How, how, we don't want to pay a hundred thousand dollars for a consultant, that was a, that was the end that wrote at Stevens. Fast forward to the next meeting, we're looking at zoning of another piece of farmland that, you know, was looking at light industrial as well. Throughout that meeting, there was testimony about how significant the three Gs were necessarily, and significant how their agricultural land was, and the best land in our township. And I'm sitting here listening to that, and I'm weighing all of my stuff, and in that moment, that evening, that's when I was, I'm like, you know what, I think, I think I should at least bring this tract of land up. I didn't, I wasn't sure whose it was, I didn't know what was going on, I just knew it was the greatest, it was the nicest piece of land. I knew, I had an idea it was the Grayvilles, I didn't look at, I was trying to look at the borders, I was trying to look at the tracts, and looking at...
I was trying to look at the tracks, looking at the entire area. But that evening, that's when I brought it up. I didn't know, I just knew that area was slated to look at a million square foot warehouse. And I thought it was my job to look at making sure that didn't happen because it was the most prime ag we had in our township. So that's when I brought it up. And that Friday morning, you will recall that, I believe, is what I was saying. So I wasn't trying to hide anything. I talked to the brother. Um, we had a discussion as well. Uh, you know, I'm not trying to get anything over on anybody. I'm just trying to do the best I can here and communicate the best I know.
And that's not what we're saying. Just for the overall, all of the residents, you know, in the event. Again, I don't have to repeat myself. It's just the communication. That's, that's the sole, the only thing we need to ask. Just communicate.
I agree.
All right. Can you clarify? Excuse me. Can you clarify something? Um, it was years ago that did a little research in the zoning and both sides of Stevens Road were zoned ag back in, prior to nineteen eighty. And then all of a sudden, right there, that nineteen eighty timeframe, it made a, a complete change to residential, everything over there. Is that, do you have any recollection?
I don't have any recollection prior to nineteen ninety-one. There had to be a, a zone created for golf, because it was in the Gulf and, and the township. So it was a modified zone created. And you can look at the requirements for that zone. That's my only recollection of any zoning that came on in the last forty years. That was before my times.
I think it's back in there. No, that's fair. Cause it was, went back through some of the records and then that was what it found. And, and there was other, uh, portions of the township addressed, I think, in a ton of ways as well. So, yeah.
Well, let's start a little debate quick.
Sure.
Smart. Who's a better golfer, you or Doug?
Favorite question, yes.
Excuse me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? We opened it up to them, so I'll open it up. Anyone else want to comment or anything?
Please. Public comments?
Uh, well, we're, we're speaking about.
Okay.
Okay. I'm seeing. All right. All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Public comment, five minutes per person limit for non-agenda items. Please go forward, state your name for the meeting minutes, please. Good evening, sir.
Yes. Nelson Mitchell. I'm going to start out by asking a question. Do we have a deputy president?
Deputy tax collector?
Excuse me, tax collector.
We do not.
Okay. Um, as a disclaimer to some of my other questions, I am both a neighbor and a friend of RC's and Jill. I've worked with them on HOA things through the years with some contentious situations that happened in our HOA in the past. And I find them both to be very professional, very intelligent people. So, um, just a couple of questions because the whole situation troubling speed. Would any of the three of you current supervisors say why RC was not qualified or even overqualified for the post?
Well, I, I think the video shows for itself and the newspaper actually had it, had it written as well. Um, my opinion, the first step to add a deputy would be an interview. I don't care who it is, if it's my mom, my brother, my sister, anybody. I ask for him to come forward to ask him questions.
Is there that, Lee?
Okay.
I actually heard you made the statement that you would have, you didn't have that kind of interview.
What's that?
You didn't even have that kind of interviews, what you were saying when you started running supervisors.
I didn't have that kind of interview.
That's what I heard you say. Sort of silent.
I mean, I didn't have an interview because I wasn't interviewed. I ran on my own. I wasn't.
But you're saying he's not qualified or overqualified?
Did I say that?
No, I'm asking.
I did not say that. So please, uh, I, it's just my question to the three of you. Um, I was the one that spoke. My board did not. And I never said that. I just asked, please come forward to interview. He did not, so I refused to ask my questions.
Is the tax collector separate from you guys in a sense? Does she, she operates independent?
I mean, you know, you know, we know, we know, we can no longer comment about the tax collector. There's, there's litigation right now, so.
All right. I might go into the other details of the second thing. But the third thing, I would say, I've heard just speaking, deceiving, the comments that you're making about zoning and things about, uh, schools acting in the best interest of the taxpayers and so forth. Do you three think you did the best job acting in the best interest of taxpayers related to that industry?
We can't, we can't comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Uh, I'd like to make a public announcement, if it's okay. Uh, June sixth, Tommy, we're going to be at the Rees Town Fireball. As of now, uh, is Benderson going to be on the agenda? All right. So I, I want to put it out there far enough for our residents to know. Um, June sixth, we will be at Rees Town Fire Company. We're not going to be here for our township meeting. Uh, Benderson, the big project up here on Boulevard, will be attending, making a presentation. Is that correct, Tommy?
Yes.
With what they're going to propose. I have a Facebook page for East Pecacco Supervisor. I will be trying to push it out there, inviting residents, uh, to come to the meeting. Um, obviously they're going to be on the agenda at the beginning. You'll be able to speak your name and all that good stuff. And, and please speak of what you'd like to see come on this property. Um, I've been here all about twenty years now. And I've always heard about a Lowe's, a Target, a this, a that, and it's still a field. The whole bunch of cars parked for parking lot. Um, so obviously there are about twenty people here. You guys know about a thousand people each. Please spread the word. Um, it's very important, in my opinion, that we all be heard, what we would like to see come in our community. If we want a warehouse there, if we want a shopping center. I'm not saying it's whatever we say is going to happen, but at least we can let them hear what we would like to see. I, I personally, I'd like to see more restaurants. I'd like to see shopping. I'd like to see things for the community so that I don't have to go to effort or ready the lanes. That's my fault. But I, I wanted to announce that and I'll announce that at our next meeting in May and start letting people know so that way. Put it in your agenda and please spread the word. And that, that meeting's going to be June sixth, seven PM, Rees Town Fire Company. Our next township board supervisor meeting will be held here Thursday, May sixteenth at seven PM. And I will make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. Motion in second, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks everyone for coming out. Enjoy the hot weather.